First thing I'd like to do is introduce our new superintendent. If you don't know him, this is Dr. Darren Almarl. We're really happy to have him here. We interviewed him and we're really proud of his enthusiasm that he's gonna bring in. So, we're looking forward to that. I've done most of his stuff.
How did you speech?
No.
I haven't prepared anything.
He's been working since about Tuesday of this last week. And so, we don't expect him to have to answer any questions. He'll direct the questions to the board. You want to introduce your wife?
Yes. I was gonna do that as soon as Chair Green was there. Introducing. My wife Rhonda is here. She's a 15-year veteran, kindergarten teaching veteran from Central City. And just, we're pretty excited to be making our home here in Plainview. And we've just found a tremendous amount of great help from a lot of nice folks, including the nice aging couple down the street.
(laughing).
Have been making themselves at home as well. So, thanks. It's certainly super awesome to be here. And I hope that after a year's time, we still feel this good about each other and have the trust and respect that we're starting with now.
Welcome.
Okay. Long consent agenda. Any question for the agenda for this evening? Full script. Any question? Any questions on the minutes?
The question, yeah.
Minutes. Financial reports? I don't think those are in the agenda.
All except one.
Yep. This one right here. Okay. I wasn't having time to get that back until now. So, lots of hearing. You have a question on that?
I would like to have you note on the employee benefit fund report, that's a couple down the road, down the line there. June 1st balance, there is a typo there. It should be $51,122.74, not $151,122.74.
What's this?
Versus, no, I'm not talking on that one. I'm talking on the actual report, the actual employee benefit report.
$151,122.74.
It should be $51,122.74. Yes.
Any questions on the claims? Looks like they're gonna have to fix it up with all the supplies they've ordered. By the way, the open meetings aren't supposed to go over here.
Yeah, a lot of those custodial supplies are for summer projects, but they're also for the coming year, like there's paper towels that are gonna last long enough to be used.
Those laminating machines, is that a replacement or is that something?
Right now, there's one laminated machine here in this library. They're putting one in the laundry room also.
The physical therapy bill, is that?
Which one?
The one from MSM Enterprises?
I believe that's probably just May. May.
Oops.
And that is for probably six or seven students.
Is that the specimen?
Yes, yes, yes.
You have a question? Any change in motion?
How many questions approve the consent agenda statement?
Second.
Second. Steve?
Yes.
Speaking?
Yes.
Yourself, yes?
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Okay. Our first item is, instead of having public comments, we're gonna have the discussion item on the co-oping that we've been talking about with Creighton. Okay? And we're gonna try and limit our discussion to this for about an hour. We'll see how it goes. We need a little more time, we'll take it. But we'll try and do it in an hour. Okay? We're just gonna talk about the co-oping. We're not gonna talk about any other items. Okay? What I would like to do is, if you would like to talk... You'd like to talk? Then there's a microphone up here. And I'll call someone to come talk. And would you please ask one question? Okay? And then we'll try and answer that question. And then you can pass it to the next person who would like a question. Until everyone has a chance to ask a question, and then we can go back and go through other people. If you would like a second time possibly. Right. Also identify yourself. Okay? I'll do that. Right. Okay. A little history on what we've been doing with this. You all know that a year and a half ago or so, we were still involved in this five-school merger. We were talking about possibly having a merger of five districts. And when we sent out our survey, it was overwhelmingly, the Plainview community was against that. And so, we decided to get out of that. We did have a question on there that I think pertains to this. And it says, "Do you support any type of junior, senior high school consolidation?" In other words, other than the five school. And we got a positive on that, 63% to 37%. And it doesn't necessarily say it's a cooperative type of thing, but I think that pertains to this, that it was a positive thing on doing it on a one or two school, or two or three school basis. So, then we put up feelers to Creighton and to Osmond and said, "We are interested in co-oping." And we had voted as a board that we were interested in that, we were gonna seek other schools out. Because we knew we had some classes coming up that were gonna be pretty small. And we felt that if we didn't do co-oping, we'd have a hard time offering some of these things that we currently offer. And I talked to board presidents at Creighton, and we had some meetings about it. I talked to the board president at Osmond, and they had a meeting about it. And at that time, nothing happened. And we've been working on this for a long time to try and get something to happen. We would've liked to have something this fall, but that didn't materialize. Anyway, eventually, we got a statement by from Creighton that they were interested in talking to us about it. And so, we, our board and their board, met together. We had a public meeting. And at that meeting, we decided we're not gonna do anything this fall. But we would vote in August of this month as to whether we wanted to co-op junior high sports. And also with that, we said we would also like to continue it on, and that would be 17, 18 for junior high sports and 18, 19, co-op all sports in junior high and high school. And so, this public meeting is to discuss whether we wanna go on with that, what your feelings are about that. Anything else?
Creighton's probably our only option. Osmond had no interest whatsoever with this. I don't think... When we met with Osmond, they had no interest whatsoever at that time to really even talk to us. So, I don't think that'll ever be an option down the road unless things really change. So, I think Creighton's probably our only option to do something if we wanna do something. And they've been waiting on this survey. They did a survey which you probably know about. And they didn't wanna make any decisions till they got their results back. So, that's one reason this has been pushed back till now, is till they got all their results back. And they do have their survey back now, which you can get online at the school website, right? Find all those.
Creighton Public Schools, all of them, smallletters.org is the site. And all this information is on that site. And probably if you stop in the office, we can probably make you copy of it also. So, that's where we are right now. Actually, share some of this with them.
Yes. What you have? Jason, you're looking up that, what was the question? It was overwhelmingly, when they asked what school, if you wanted to co-op with somebody, it was hands down Plainview, about 70%, over everybody else. One of the questions was if we wanted to consolidate with another school, or with Plainview at junior high. What were the numbers on that, Jason?
Co-op.
Just co-op.
Would you favor the Creighton School Board investigating a junior high sports cooperative to meet short-term need for possible low numbers in Creighton in the near future? And their response to that was 72.9%. When it asked which school, and it listed Bloomfield, Orchard Clearwater, Plainview, Vertigee, on co-oping, 87.9% said they would choose Plainview. The next closest one was Vertigee at 6.6%. There was one con here though, that kinda, and this is just their community survey, they must've put this in maybe after we discussed with them. That said, "The Creighton School Board has been approached by the Plainview School Board District to join junior high boys cooperative agreement for Plainview's immediate low numbers in football, basketball, and wrestling." I think when we talked with them though, didn't agree, say, boys and girls sports? Is that correct? And they come back, the highest percentage was 41.5% would without a cooperative. Is that the way you guys get that question? So, it kinda contradicts a little bit. And this is just a community survey, what they do with their numbers. I don't know if that's just their questions.
And some of those things, we said if we're gonna do this, it's gonna be a long-term thing. We're not looking at doing it for two years. Because if we're gonna do that, that doesn't do anybody any good. And we're not interested in taking our kids up there for football, or having our kids come down here for wrestling. We wanna co-op, which means that you share everything, please Ben. And that, the details of that would have to be worked out. That's why we had to hire administrators to work those things out. And I can't tell you all the details on that. But I know that we're not gonna cut any programs that we currently offer so that we can have sports during the day. That's not gonna happen. Okay? It's gonna be, if we have to do something, it's gonna have to be just extended after school. We're not gonna cut any programs to put this in. Okay? Any other statements anybody wants to make? Okay. If you have a question, go ahead and grab the mic. You don't have to stand up there if you don't want to. You can pass it around as we go. But if you have a question, go ahead and grab the mic. Try to stick to one question, then run somebody else. As we go around.
Or just comments?
Or just comments.
It's nice to see so many here.
We'll talk. I need a mic.
I guess you can use a mic. If nothing else, just hold on to it so we know that you're here.
Okay.
You have the floor.
You have the floor.
We'll talk. We know that you have the floor.
Okay.
We'd rather you not use the mic.
I've heard enough of that. Yeah.
Just that you have, we know that you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. I had several questions written down. And basically, I'll start out with the first one. And why did you choose, why did, did Osmond give any reasons why they did not want to join Plainview? That would be my question. And why would you choose Creighton over there? The people that I've talked to in Osmond, and they are not on the board, and most of them do not agree with their board. These are a lot of former teachers that are interested in co-op. And that's what I get. So, again, I kinda disagree with Mike's statement that with Osmond, it won't go anywhere. Can you help me out a little bit?
Sure.
When we started this out, we...
Use your mic.
Sorry.
When we started this out, we forced both of them. Okay? In fact, we sent a letter to them. And then, as I said, I talked to the presidents of the school board. And we didn't get any responses from either one. A little bit later, we talked again, and they both put it on their agenda at their school board and talked about it. And we did get something from Creighton. We did not get anything from Osmond. They, the last thing I heard them say is they left it in our ballpark if something was gonna happen. Well, that, we had already, we had already gone there. We'd already presented some stuff. And so, we were waiting for them to do something. So, I don't know what more we could've done. And I understand what you're saying, because I'm sure that there's a lot of people that are that way. And there's also a lot of people in Creighton that are pro doing something like this, but there's also a lot of people that are negative. And so, their job is to go talk to school board members. And we need to be talked to. That's our job. So, thank you, Larry. Anybody else?
I'll say something. I read the results of the Creighton survey in the newspaper three or four weeks ago when I was up there. What I took from that was that when their numbers get low, they were 70-some percent wanted, they said they wanted to go with us. But I think the way that the question was phrased in there, that, and Jason was talking about it there, that as of right now, I don't think that they're really interested so much in a co-op. So, you know, I've been talking about these numbers to administrators since this year's eighth grade class was kindergartners, because I realized a long time ago that the numbers were gonna be really low. And too bad something hadn't been done by now. I don't know whether I'm necessarily for a co-op or against it, you know? Kind of, there's, I'm for something that, for across the board. But that kinda makes me think that when their numbers get down, then they're okay going with us. But I mean, we needed help the last couple of years in junior high. I'm, just tell me if I'm wrong on interpreting that, those questions. I don't know.
One thing about the question, it says, "Would you support, on the short-term, co-oping with, co-oping with Plainview in that?" That's not something that we're interested in. Are we?
No.
I don't think anybody's interested in that.
But we made it very clear when we were up there that it would be 50/50. That we weren't interested in going there when our numbers were low, and them coming here when their numbers were low. That's not gonna work.
Yeah. And it was across the board, right? In all activities?
Yes.
Now, you said sports are all activities?
Sports.
Excuse me, sports.
Forgot.
Well, we, I don't know. I would like to do everything.
That's kinda in the paper. It says activities, but then you guys are saying sports. We just need to clarify. I guess we didn't talk all activities?
There's a question here on the one. When that number's sealed.
I won't sing, I promise. It says here, "Sports in the near future when their numbers are gonna get low," is how their question read. Now, if they screwed up on their survey, or if that's what they meant, I don't know. And that was when, in the near future, that was the 72, roughly 73% that they would like to do something when their numbers are low.
Anyone else?
Do they not consider their numbers low at this time?
Well, that's what they told us. And they said, "Well, we don't have any problem with the girl's sports." And that yet, I said, "No, Vicky told me that they canceled their reserve games in basketball on the Washington level because they didn't have enough kids." So, apparently, there are other places too, besides just the boys' sports.
My question is, what's this, I'm sorry. What does Jennifer Gundy, Will Gundy's mother, what does 50/50 mean? Like, one sport would be there, one sport would be here?
No. It means that when we have the sport, it will be a Craneview-Platton, Creighton.
Craneview. Sorry, Mom!
Craneview-Platton team. And we may practice a week in Plainview, and then practice a week in Creighton.
So, if we have a home game, is that one week Creighton, one week here?
Right.
And how do you divide coaching? Because we have some of the best coaches in Plainview. How do you figure that out?
I can't answer that right now.
Okay. I was just curious.
That's, that's good. I know, I know that the people that are in Plainview, we wanna keep them coaching. I know we have some business.
We have some great. So... Probably on a sport-by-sport basis. You know, you can't just say, "Okay, all these coaches are gonna do this, and those coaches are gonna do that," right down the line or wherever. You gotta go look at each sport and say, "Okay, we don't really have anybody that wants to coach that sport, so maybe we'll use their coaches."
It determines that. I mean, both players, both wrestling coach around.
The administration will get together and do that. And the coach, the ADs will be involved in it. It won't be us. It'll be the administration and the ADs.
I guess as a parent, we're concerned that it's gonna be 50/50. It's not, we're sending our kids to Creighton?
No.
To play sports?
We're not gonna do that.
Okay.
We're not gonna send our kids to, for football to Creighton, and they bring their wrestlers over here. We're not gonna do that.
Okay.
It's gonna be a shared thing where we contribute.
Okay. And if it means, I mean, we want our son to be able to participate, that we wanted an even deal.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Jenny, I would say, you know, as a, you know, Bob, Mr. Green's mentioned a couple times, the administration will have to figure that out. But when we say 50/50, and if we got to that point, Creighton would say that too, right? Neither of us are gonna do it unless we agree to 50/50. But there's no way to really calculate that. And to have everybody agree, this is purely 50/50, that's always the goal. But we sure wouldn't, you know, want anybody counting the amount of actual minutes our kids spend over there versus over here. You know, those details will be incredibly complicated. And that'll be the challenge of both administrative teams, to make it as even a co-op as possible. I would probably always resist using the language of 50/50. But that's certainly the goal, is to make sure that both folks, both sides feel like, you know, we're both sacrificing, we're both giving, we're both working, you know, to have them feel like they're, you know, welcome here and vice versa, and, you know, that we're purely, you know, sharing as much as we can equally.
Right. And I'm not talking minutes. I heard that the school would transport our kids to Creighton. Then I heard from someone else that we'd take one way, and parents were responsible to get them home. So, I don't know how that all works out either, so...
I can't tell you.
Yeah.
I can't tell you that. But I would tell you that when the kids are done with the practice, they'll be in Plainview. We'll bus the kids back here. We're not gonna expect parents to go. Now, it may be 5 o'clock, maybe 4:30, because we had to do it after the school day, so maybe later, the kids will be back here. We're gonna transport to our facility.
Okay.
I know what that's like.
I have a question.
Just wait, just wait. She has a floor right now.
That's okay. If you were gonna have, like, a head coach...
She has a floor right now.
Who?
She has a, as soon as you have a mic, then you can pick it up. Identify yourself, please.
Susan Norris.
Thank you.
Plainview Music Booster President and Sport Booster President. You said earlier that all of the practices would happen after school?
I didn't, I don't know that.
Okay.
But I said that we're not going to cut any programs in Plainview to have the sports during that time.
Okay.
We're not gonna cut any music programs. We're not gonna cut any of those things to have, so we can have sports.
Yeah. Because in one of the past meetings, they had been discussing busing the junior high kids during seventh hour, so they could practice at eighth hour. And seventh hour is junior high music. So, that was one question. The other question I had is, is each school gonna be maintaining their separate facilities then? Are we gonna continue to maintain everything here, you know, weight rooms, gyms, the football field for, well, in football, two games a year then?
For high school?
And, you know, half the number of basketball games a year?
Yes.
So, those will still be separate expenses for both schools?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not merging. If you merge, then you would, then you wouldn't have to do that. It would cut down on some of those things. But maybe that could lead to that in the future, but that's not what we're doing now. Everybody's gonna just keep their same facilities that they have. And we'll have to buy our uniforms together.
Okay.
Okay?
She asked a question there.
Okay.
I asked a question. We gotta talk, so...
Go ahead.
Start talking, Sally.
You're only gonna ask one question.
I have a question.
Anyone else?
Here's something. I'm, is it on? No. I'm not offering this.
Press mute, so it can be like...
You're curious, you know, right? Yeah. I'm curious.
It says it's on. Broken.
No. Okay. I'm Stacy Sims. I guess I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of observations. With what Larry was saying about Osmond, there were people that, parents that I had talked to that didn't understand why Osmond would tell us no and not want anything to do with us. And this year for baseball, we had five or six Osmond boys come over and play on our team to help us out. And some of those parents even coached with us. Everything went great. So, I would hope that that wouldn't be out of the question in the future for them. Another observation was, we finished up our 12-year-old baseball league tournament yesterday. I'm gonna give a shout-out to the boys. They were top seed and came in third, so I was very proud of them for that.
Nine and a half hours.
Yeah. So, yay for those guys. But when we had downtime in between a couple of games yesterday, the boys were talking, and they counted up at least 11, I can't remember if it was 11 or 15, boys that would go out for football. And there were many comments from them that they didn't wanna play with Creighton. So, I know there have been comments about the kids wanna get together, it's not the problem, the kids don't have the problem, it's the parents. Well, if we listen to the kids, there are a lot of kids that don't wanna do that either. I had one more, and now I forgot it.
Well, then your question was, how many are gonna go out for football? Well, we have a paper here. Mrs. Novicki handed out, has all the kids' signatures on it. Ask them if they're gonna go out, what sports they're gonna go out for. She contacted all those people. And so, the numbers we were working on is what the kids told us. Now, if they've changed, that could be. And that'd be great.
I'm excited.
I know Mrs. Novicki said she contacted all the parents on that list, but I, there were parents with kids on that list that didn't get contacted by phone or email or anything by her, so, no.
No voicemail.
They didn't, Bob.
I don't care. No. She told me that she contacted all of them, left, she attempted to call them different times, and left messages on their phone. If they weren't signed up on this, then it didn't happen.
She said she left voicemail and answering machine messages, and parents did not receive them. I would say, one, yeah, maybe they didn't come. But when it's two or more that didn't get messages, messages were not publicly left this technology.
We're not gonna discuss them tonight.
You said they were contacted?
I think they were contacted.
Parents said they weren't.
Okay. I just wanted, I'm not gonna argue either, Bob, but I wanna tell you, I talked to those parents of some of those boys that are on that list. They did...
Says it's on. Broken!
Okay, I'm Stacy Sims. I guess I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of observations. With what Larry was saying about Osmond, there were people that, parents that I had talked to that didn't understand why Osmond would tell us no and not want anything to do with us. And this year for baseball, we had five or six Osmond boys come over and play on our team to help us out and some of those parents even coached with us, everything went great. So I would hope that that wouldn't be out of the question in the future for them. Another observation was, we finished up our twelve-year-old baseball league tournament yesterday. I'm going to give a shout out to the boys, they were top seed and came in third, so I was very proud of them for that.
Nine and a half hours.
So yay for those guys. But when we had downtime in between a couple of games yesterday, the boys were talking and they counted up at least eleven, I can't remember if it was eleven or fifteen boys that would go out for football, and there were many comments from them that they didn't want to play with Creighton. So I know there have been comments about the kids want to get together, it's not the prob, the, the kids don't have the problem, it's the parents. Well, if we listen to the kids, there are a lot of kids that don't want to do that either. I had one more and now I forgot it.
Well, then your question was, how many are going to go out for football? Well, we've, we have a paper here, Mrs. Novicki handed out, has all the kids' signatures on it, ask them if they're going to go out, what sports they're going to go out for. She contacted all those people. And so the numbers we were working on is what the kids told us. Now, if they've changed, that could be. And that'd be great.
I know Mrs. Novicki said she contacted all the parents on that list, but I, there were parents with kids on that list that didn't get contacted by phone or email or anything by her, so, no.
No voicemail.
They didn't, Bob.
I don't care, no, she told me that, she contacted all of the left, she attempted to call them different times and left messages on their phone. If they weren't signed up on this, then it didn't happen.
She said she left voicemail and answering machine messages and parents did not receive them. I would say, one, yeah, maybe they didn't come, but when it's two or more that didn't get messages, messages were not publicly left, this technology...
We're not going to discuss them tonight.
You said they were contacted?
I think they were contacted.
Parents said they weren't.
Okay, I, I just wanted, I'm not going to argue either, Bob, but I want to tell you, I talked to those parents of some of those boys that are on that list, they did not get contacted, okay?
But there's only nine on the list, so just so you know that, that signed up.
This is the one that she contacted, the kids had a chance to sign up. If they didn't sign up, then they were con, parents weren't contacted because there would be no reason to. So maybe if there's eleven, there could have been people that were contacted.
No, because I know those boys' names are on that list.
Could you allow what the new list of current kids that are interested in going out, maybe it might make a difference in how we decide this? Before the next meeting, you get a panel?
Honestly, I don't understand why not all of the junior high parents were not contacted about this, or at least discussed about it. Let them know what's going on, because it's been pretty closed and I've got a lot of people that didn't even realize we were having a meeting tonight about this, even though you put it in the paper, because it's not in details. I'm kind of disappointed in the way the administration has meant to get things out, because nobody knew. We have schoolteachers that didn't even know, they work here, didn't even know we were voting on this tonight or even discussing it. Sorry, Christine Whacker.
Any other questions?
Are we thinking, I'm sorry, that this, Jennifer Gundy again, won't be a year or two, this will go all the way through high school? I have a son going into seventh grade, this could go all through high school.
That's the way I would think.
We won't determine if he has enough for a year to the next, it'll be all the way through.
I'm talking for myself, I'm not interested in doing this for two years in junior high and not doing it in high school. If we're going to do it, it's going to be a long-term commitment between the two schools. If we get through our low numbers and then they are hurt and then they want to do it and they don't do anything with us now, we're not going to do anything with them later on. If we don't get anything with Creighton on this, we're going to go talk to Osmond again. And maybe they'll have a different attitude. Because they'll know we're serious now.
We don't see numbers coming up anywhere through...
The way it is right now, this is going to be a thing that happens periodically all the time. If we don't co-op with somebody, then, then we can do some things that we used to have here. Used to have, in football, we had a freshman team that played four, five, six games, and we had a reserve team that played all those games, and we had a varsity team. We didn't have freshmen that came in, little skinny freshmen that came in that did, that had to play varsity. And got the crap beat out of them. And then they don't like football anymore. You know, they get a chance to grow into it, okay? And that's the problem that I have. You know, I came here and we did drills, Ray would come and give us, holy heck, if we had a freshman going against a senior in the drill, well, it's not just a drill, now you're doing that in games.
I understand.
So it's a safety issue, there's a lot of...
I agree.
Lot of things.
I'm old too, there was fifty, sixty kids out for football.
Right, right. And you learned it, and you had competition, and you worked into the game, not just football, basketball, and everything, competition, that's the thing.
And it's not that we don't have the numbers, because we have good numbers at the school, but we don't have the participa, participation from these students. So that is a goal that I hope that we can get that number up, you know, and those to want them to participate.
I agree.
Back to what you said, if you have people that haven't been contacted, would you have, would you call the officer, call Patty and tell her that who those people are? So that they can be contacted?
I would try to do that, please.
Thank you.
When, I was at that Creighton meeting that we were, when we were up there, and the parents were awesome that were at the meeting, they were very welcoming, they, they really felt like they wanted to give our boys an opportunity to play if they weren't going to be able to play next year. By the way, I'm Sally Schott, Colton is my son, who is in that small eighth grade class that everybody's worried about. And the thing that they, they are concerned about was, at least the parents at that meeting, was that, okay, Plainview needs our help now, we want to make sure we reach out to them and help them, because when our kids who are third and fourth graders now get in there, we're going to have trouble. So I think that's where the, you know, short-term need, they, I don't know, they're worried about their third and fourth graders. At that meeting, they had a really nice list that showed how many boys and girls, a breakdown of the boys and girls in each class and as they're coming up, and I know we had that at the five school merger talks, and I wonder if, if you guys have a current or up recent list of that? Because for me, I have one in the smallest class and then I have two coming up that are in some of the larger classes. Reagan is a, going to be a fifth grader, so this is going to affect him also in junior high. And I think there's like twenty-three-ish kids in his class, so assuming that those are about half-boys, that's twelve boys in his class. And I, I don't know how many kids are in the above him and the below him, so when he's in junior high. But then also I've got a daughter who's in first grade, well, second, she's going to be in second grade, and there's like thirty-two kids in that class. So that's going to be huge, you know, I'm thinking about, it might, that's going to be a lot of kids on those sports. And I honestly don't know for sure where I sit because it depends on the meeting or the talk or whether or not I'm on the fence for this merger or not. I want, I want him to be safe, I want him to play, I want him to have fun and be successful, but also, I'm, I'm not sure what that is. So my question is, I think it'd help all of us if we had a current list of how many, whatever. Where is that? Or would you, why do...
This was in the paper.
It was in the newspaper?
It was in the first time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll read it to you. Okay, preschool right now, twenty kids, junior kindergarten, four, kindergarten, twenty...
Do you have boys and versus girls at all?
I don't have that.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, you have that, maybe you can, if you have the list there, go ahead.
Yeah, and the, uh, May fifth enrollment figures, so these are, I can give you for, for this coming class as of May fifth. Okay, so, uh...
Your honor.
First graders, thirteen boys, six girls. Second graders, sixteen boys, fifteen girls. Third graders, nine boys, eight girls. Fourth graders, fourteen boys, four girls. Fifth graders, ten boys, eleven girls. Sixth graders, fifteen boys, seven girls. Seventh graders, eight boys, ten girls. Eighth graders, nine boys, six girls. Ninth graders, ten boys, twelve girls. Tenth graders, ten boys, nine girls. Eleventh grade, ten boys, fourteen girls. Seniors this year, twenty-three boys, thirteen girls.
Could you say the kindergarten again?
Incoming kindergarten, that's kind of hard for me to calculate, I think, uh, depend upon if, I don't know what our J.K. numbers are, but fourteen and nine, is that be right?
Three or four boys of J.K.
J.K. has four here.
Last year, we had four in J.K. and nineteen in, in preschool. This, this last year. So we're talking about, if this were, for seventeen, eighteen, so not this year, but next school year, we have a projection of twenty-three boys and seventeen girls, that'll be in seventh and eighth grade, next school year, twenty-three boys, seventeen girls.
For seventh and eighth grade?
Seventh and eighth grade. Next year, twenty-three boys, seventeen girls.
Derek, are you taking into account Zion?
No.
I don't know what's out there yet.
Not very much.
Not a lot.
Seven, twenty-eight, my friend.
If all of them went out, we'd have plenty of kids. But they don't have...
You're looking at about half of them that go out. So that diminishes the numbers, unfortunately.
For the kids that signed up this year for wrestling, football, can we even field a team with Plainview?
Probably won't go until the first day of practice.
Well, if you have a list of kids that signed up, I'm just curious with the kids that signed up.
A small team, I think, is, given the kids, is what our numbers show, there's been a few kids that moved in. That's why maybe they get hurt and they go nuts.
Sure. And I know last year they had a court for a couple of games because of academic reasons too, so...
That's why it's nice to have a little extra, so you handle the situation.
Yeah, we don't want our kids hurt, you know, without a doubt.
And you don't want the kid to practice for how many weeks, get into the games and then you call the games off. You know, how do more of those things add to the kid?
Yeah.
Work all that time, they never get to play game.
And kids that are academically doing well also and putting in time in sports.
I'm kind of, Alan, I guess, you guys say you, you talk to parents from other schools and, you know, it's great, but that doesn't do us as a board any good. We work with their board, we don't work with those parents. And we can't go into their districts and start talking to their parents and say, hey, we think you should be doing this. I mean, their, their board is never going to work with us if we start doing that. So it's all great and dandy, but until they go to their board and their board sees what they want and, and moves on that, we can't do anything, because we have to work with that board. And that's kind of my opinion with Creighton right now. I don't think Creighton's board is a hundred percent go on this deal, in my opinion, this is my feeling. And I think they're dragging their feet because I don't think they know, I don't think they all want to do it, first of all, and I don't think they know what, what their district members want for sure. And for me, if they aren't all on board to do this a hundred percent, I don't think we should do it. Because if we go in there and half of them are, yeah, we'll do it, but I really don't think it's the right thing to do, as soon as a problem comes up, they're going to say, I told you so, I knew we shouldn't do this, and it, it's not going to work that way. You have to have both boards go into this saying, we're going to make it work, we're going to have problems, but we're going to figure them out, and this is what we need to do, so it's best for our kids. And to me, if both boards aren't on that same boat, I don't think we should do it.
Absolutely.
I mean, I want to be on that boat, and I am on that boat, but I don't know that they are. And I, I don't blame them for that, they got to do what's best for their school and for their people, what they think's right. I mean, I wouldn't want me to do it just because Creighton wanted me to do it, I wouldn't, that wouldn't be fair to you guys either. So I'm not blaming them if they don't do it, but I'm just saying, I think that's where it needs to be. And the thing with Larry, when we talked to Osmond, you know, he wondered why we got that opinion that they didn't want to work with us. Well, we talked about numbers and class sizes, and one of the things was they have three kids in wrestling this year. And I said, well, wouldn't that be a good place to start, maybe one or two sports and try wrestling? And he says, well, no, our parents won't go for that. He said, those wrestling parents think our numbers are going to come back, they don't want to do anything. That was their A.D.'s comment. So that's all we have to go on. What are, I mean, what are we supposed to do with a comment like that? You can't change your mind or say that's not true, you know?
I think, when I talked to an Osmond school board member, they indicated that they, at this time, their numbers are okay, and their coaches are doing such a great job with the kids, and they don't want to cause any ruckus for that. So at this point, it's a no-go.
Can I talk one more time?
Yes.
I'm in favor of co-op, okay? Don't get me wrong that I'm up here trying to not have co-op. However, hearing the comments of you guys and us, as a coach, I was never asked my feeling by the administration. I don't know whether they don't care, whether they figure I'm old enough that they're going to be rid of me in a year or two years, I don't know. You know, I've never been asked, I don't know whether the other coaches have ever been asked. It sounds like none of the students have ever been asked. And they're the ones that are doing it, you know? They're the ones that are going to be doing it. Now, can you get them all to agree? I don't know. But that is, like I said, and I agree with Mike and I, you know, you have to do what, what you can do and understand that. And, and, so I don't know where, you know, somewhere, we have to get somewhere. And I don't know whether, maybe the rest of the coaches were asked, I don't, Mr. Boyer, were you ever asked?
Several times.
Were you interested in co-op?
Yes.
Okay. For most of them?
I think that the majority of the people, I think that everybody that is up here was asked.
Okay, so I'm not...
At least talked to.
Okay.
You're just not here now.
Okay. I ask a lot of the coaches what they thought about it, I just, you, I guess, maybe my slide jumps. I had talked to Jason, he's the one I guess I really talked to. Yeah. I mean, the slide, but I had, I had... Yeah, I understand that, yeah, no, it's not a problem. And I understand why I'm not up here all the time. I don't know what the answer to this stuff is. If you don't want to do it, that's fine, we don't have to do it, but, but on the other hand, don't expect us to, to have great teams and if you, if your kids are freshmen, they come out and they have to play, you know?
And they get hurt.
Or even at junior high, if we don't have enough to field a team because of academics and because of injuries and we got to cancel games, I mean, Laurel had to do it, it, it happens.
And then you do that a few times, then people say, we're not going to schedule them, they're not going to play their games. And if the kids aren't making academically, they're not going to be in athletics, that's not going to change.
My concern kind of goes along with what Mike said, I don't feel like Creighton is as in this as we are. It kind of sounded like, well, they'll consider it when their numbers get low or maybe just try girls first, but I don't know if I want to go into this, if they're not all the way in it, because who's to say in a few years, would they have the option to say, well, we don't want to do this anymore, we have great numbers, you know? It just doesn't seem like they're all the way in it, so... And then, you know, like some of them said, I don't think the kids were asked really either their opinion. I mean, because Derek said earlier, if we have a full team, he'd rather just stay with Plainview, but if there's not enough to play and it gets to that point, I mean, how urgent is it with both sides that we're at that point? I mean, is it really pressing with Creighton right now that they need the numbers, or is it really pressing with us right now that we need the numbers?
Creighton doesn't need the numbers.
See, and that's my concern is, either they're going to be in or they're out, it doesn't sound like they want to be in right now.
But they will.
In the same way, they have classes that don't have kids.
Okay. If you look at that survey that Creighton sent out on the demographic, seventy percent of the people that answered the survey don't have kids in school. Only twenty-nine percent of those people that answer that survey have kids in school. So when you're looking at that survey, don't be skewed by some of that either, because the people who have the biggest interest in that are the smallest respondents. So we don't really know how the parents really feel, we know how the non-parents feel. They don't have the biggest stake in it though, you know? And one question I had was, you know, we sent out that survey during the five school talks, are you considering doing something like that again, or you just want to go into August, make, with a, with a decision with their board?
We have taken the idea that we are, we, as a board, passed a policy that we were interested in co-op, but we have conditions on that. If they don't meet the conditions, then we're not going to do it. We would appreciate, if you want to talk to any, any of us individually, we would appreciate that, so we know. And I would encourage anybody that wants to talk, to talk to us, we're part of the administration. And if something that they're not doing that we want them to do, we will get in that.
But are there conditions, Bob? I mean, it's sort of...
It's going to, it's going to be a co-op. It's going to be, it's not going to take our kids there and, and leave them there and they're going to play under Creighton's uniform, or they're going to come over here and play under ours, it's going to be a co-op between us where we share everything together. Okay? And if it's not going to be a long-term thing, if we think it's going to be a two-year thing, we're not interested. We're interested in doing it in all sports and throughout high school, junior high and high school.
And boys and girls.
Boys and girls.
It'll start out with junior high, because the football thing, you have to commit, we have another year before that, we just committed, this is their first year. So that's why high school, we're waiting until you have to commit for football.
When we left the last joint meeting that we had, we agreed that we would both vote on whether we would co-op seventeen, eighteen year. So we're going to do that August, that would be for the next year. And then next August, we're going to vote whether we would co-op all high school and junior high, and that would be for the, for next year. So we have to do that because if we're going to do football, we need to let that go because there's a two-year thing on football. So we're starting the two-year thing this year, and so next year we would have to do it soon enough so we can get all the things done and get our A.D.'s time to, and the administration And get our ADs and time to get, and administration time to work on that stuff.
So the board will vote in August for the next year.
For the junior high in seventeen, seventeen. And that's not just for one year. We would, it'll have to be.
Right, okay.
Do you have to let the state know that you're doing this?
What?
Do you have to let the state of Nebraska know that you're doing this, the Department of Education?
Yes.
The co-op, yes.
Well, for high school, you do. I don't think you have to, for junior high. I don't think junior high runs the sports program. The state doesn't run that, I don't think. But you have to for high school. It takes time.
Well, it's after the classification, too. Like, if you have a lot of kids, you have to go to.
Because you take all schools together.
Well, anybody want to comment whether they, what side of the fence you're on? We really haven't heard that from anybody, whether you want it, don't want it. You just kind of ask questions. You're not really giving us anything.
I actually have just a comment about that. So Alyssa Fromm, Mr. Earl, my husband is Wyatt, and he remembers knuckle push-ups at the pool on the cement, by the way.
I think I got a call from his mom on. I remember he was pretty tough.
We like it.
He was a pretty good wrestler.
Yeah, I know. And actually, he's warned my son Tanner, no, I mean, he has. He says it jokingly. So Tanner is going to be in sixth grade, and he's the kind of kid who plays all the sports, loves all the sports, and is go Plainview. But we, last year, with Jason's son and another kid, the last couple of years, we went to Osman, played football with them, because we didn't have a little kids program here. They loved it. They made great friends over there. No, no problem. They've, I think that any kid can adapt to that. However, you know, go Pirates. They want to play for Plainview. I remember during the during the merger conversation, his big comment was, I don't want to play for Quad County, or whatever. You know, that's the name he made up for the school. He said, I want to play for the Pirates. So I, you know, that's probably just from growing up with a dad who is here and just loving the team, that's that's what they want to do. But I think they're also adaptable. So, you know, here we are in this fence. I think a lot of it starts with when they're younger. And for the longest time, we didn't have those programs here. And this year, we're gonna have, I think there's thirty or thirty-five kids from fourth through sixth grade. They're gonna do the the youth football program, and it's pads, playing in a league. So they're gonna start getting that experience. Because if you catch them when they're young, and they get in there, they're not scared, they know how to do it, junior high is probably too late, you know? So we're starting that. There's, they are doing flag football for the little guys, for the younger ones. So they're out there learning, you know, how to do that. Baseball, like you said, we're getting more and more kids. We had two, two senior P E teams because there's so many kids that are out. And I think a lot of it starts just with the interest when they're younger. So they get up there and they start, and we're, so we're building that. We're building that from the bottom up, you know, but it's gonna take some time, you know? And I know probably a lot of them, I don't know about you guys that are here in the room, that are young, but I don't know if you want to play for the Quad County or for the Pirates, you know? It's kind of just, it's probably how it is. But I think they would play no matter what. So that doesn't help your decision. It's just some comments that, you know? And I want to say respectfully as well, I don't, every your job, it's a tough, it's a tough decision to make, and you're gonna get, you know, everybody from all sides of the fence at you. So I appreciate all of you for all you do.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead.
I don't think I, I've talked loud enough.
Hello? I've talked loud enough, too. Okay, um, because it's hard to talk in a room full of adults sometimes. On Colton Show. And when we signed that paper to see if we wanted to play football, she never told us that it was gonna be used for this Creighton-Plainview thing. She just said, what do you want to play next year? So I'm pretty sure that there's gonna be more kids in our class that would play football if they knew we needed the people to play on Plainview. And they had to go to her office to make time during their day to get down there to sign it. So it's not like, it was very intimate. Who wants to walk into Mrs. Novicki's office for Pete's sake? If they knew that it was like do or die, we're gonna have a Plainview team, they'd have been in that office, and they would have faced the beast of the principal. But anyway, sorry. It's hard going into a principal's office. The other thing is, I've heard a lot of the boys say they would rather play for Plainview and lose by seventy-five than not. So that means a lot. It should mean a lot to you guys as a board. They love our school.
I would want to play if I was gonna be at seventy-five.
What?
I would play if I was gonna be at seventy-five. I'm all competitive.
It's demoralizing. We've done it.
Oh, we've done it.
G A C C ring a bell?
These guys did it last year. And they still want to play.
To answer Mike's question about, you know, where are we on the, are you, where are you on the fence, for or against? I've never been afraid of a bigger school. I was for the five-school thing. It wasn't the popular opinion. But we came from Omaha, and we saw what opportunities were available in that sense, and that's how we looked at it, what's best for the kids. When I look at this, if you just want to look at football, and let's get away from junior high for a minute, and let's look at high school. Now, this year, we're okay. My son's a senior. But next year, you were losing that big class, and those boys are gonna be hurting on that field. I mean, just from the numbers that Dr. Alt gave us, we're looking at thirty kids from ninth through eleventh grade right now, and not all of them go out for football. You know, some of them are very dedicated to wrestling. In other sports, they don't all play football. I look at my son, who was playing varsity as a sophomore here, his first year here, when we moved here. And yeah, he's a big kid, but he got slammed, and he's had injuries every year. And I look at him now, and I think, what is gonna happen for the poor sophomore that goes up against him? I mean, I would lay down on the ground myself, you know, if I were, and it's, it is scary to think that you're having ninth and tenth graders up against the eleventh and twelfth graders. The kids, your body's more developed, you're stronger, you're bigger, you've got more experience. It it opens that door for a lot of injuries. When I look at the co-op, for me, I look at, well, I would like to see a true ninth-grade team in all sports. I'd love to see a JV team that's truly ninth and tenth grade, because they're learning the fundamentals and the development side of that with the kids at the same developmental stages they are. They're not playing against those seniors and juniors. And, you know, the the weight and the height between a ninth grader and a twelfth grader can be huge. I would love to see a varsity team that is just upperclassmen. So when I look at things like that, I think, yeah, that's, that's good, you know, I would, I would, the kids are, you're gonna have less injuries, they're gonna learn more, and they're gonna be more dedicated to their sports. There might be some more opportunity there as well. You know, people say, I live in a small town because I want my kids to do it all. Just because you consolidate doesn't mean they still can't play. So they might not be on varsity, they might be on JV, or they might, maybe there's enough kids for inter-male, but doesn't mean that you don't have the opportunity to play. So that's kind of where I'm at. My only concern really with this is, is, you know, facilities, town pride, how you saw to the kids. And a lot of that, I think they'll, they'll take our attitude. If we're positive about that, it'll, it'll pass on to them. If we're negative about it, that's what they're gonna get. We can't put our heads in the sand and pretend like we're not gonna be in this situation. We can't pretend that we're not having low numbers. And we're not the only school with low numbers. Everybody has low numbers. And everyone's gonna be in the same boat as we. If we're in a position now where we can do this with the school board that is willing to discuss it, and another school that's willing to talk options and let's do it, other than waiting until you're in that position where you have no choice, and in that situation, you might be talking with a school that will just absorb your kids because they're not open to it. I think we need to explore this, like all options of it, in a positive way. And it would help the board if you could tell the public, if you want, if you want their true opinion, tell them what the positives are. If we combine our sports with Creighton, this is what you're gonna get, you know? The negative is obviously we just don't have the team. It, and and the other side of it, too, when you're looking at football for high school, we opt into eight-man. We have no hope of ever going to state. And that's very demoralizing to those boys that are on that team that want to go to state. When I look at this, I think, hey, we have an opportunity to get there, not just in football, but in basketball and other things, because we're combining our athletes. That builds pride over time. So I would say I'm more in favor of it if it's done right, if it's a true co-op. That's my, that's my point.
Thank you.
I don't think any of this, she pretty much covered everything I was gonna say. I'm, I'm on the fence, too, but I'm leaning more towards supporting it right now. The main thing for me is, I I understand the school pride, and I understand, you know, you want to be proud of where you're from and all that. And Plainview, whatever it seems like, Creighton-Plainview may not be the same. But it's a lot better than having to go to your kids and say, well, you can't play because there's no team to play. I think that's just brass tacks. Tacks is, you need the numbers. If the numbers aren't there, then you're gonna beat seventy-five a lot more. Not so much football. I mean, basketball, I know, struggle for a long time. You get infused with more talent, you're more competitive, more people show up. It builds better character for you. I'd say I'd lean definitely forward right now, because the numbers don't lie.
There are some kids, too, who, if we didn't have sports, they probably wouldn't school. My son is good academically, but honestly, if there wasn't sports, there wouldn't be a lot of interest in here, you know? He definitely doesn't come for the academics.
They'll, they'll start transferring to other schools. That's, we picked up some kids this year for wrestling because of that happened, you know? For our strong. I'll, I'll make a few comments here. My second oldest son, there wasn't enough kids here to play baseball. Creighton didn't have enough for a team, so they went together, you know? It was a great experience. They were state champions, state runner-ups. Kids got along great, parents got along, I mean, it was just super, okay? I think the more so than anything, I would see it as a safety issue for football. You know, our numbers aren't gonna be great in wrestling, but honestly, this year, we're only gonna have ten kids, and we might win state. And, you know, we're gonna graduate four, get three, then we're gonna graduate two, get four or five, then we're gonna graduate two, get a whole bunch. And then when that group's up there, I think we could probably win state again. So... But saying that, I also think that if Creighton and Plainview are together, we might win state in wrestling this year in Class C. So I'm, if if we go a co-op across the board, all sports for a long-term thing, I support it. Because I think in the long run, it would be good for a lot of kids, for a lot of things, the Susan said. She said a lot of great stuff there. And I don't really like the idea of why they said that it was just a few boys' sports. I, I think that girls' sports could benefit greatly because of it, too. I mean, I don't know why. I know that a lot of it is safety for football, in my opinion. Because, you know, if I look at it from the wrestling standpoint, I can put five good kids on the mound, and we're gonna go down to state tournament, and we'll play top five every year. You know, so do we need help from other people? Probably not. But if it was for the betterment of all activities for a long-term thing, I think it would be super. That's my opinion.
Just don't lose our coaches along the way. Had some good ones. One other thing this could turn into down the road is, you know, the academic end of it, too. We need a teacher. They got a teacher. Where are we working together? Where do you think we're gonna go to make things work with each other?
You're teaching their calculus to their kids.
Um, I don't think I am this year.
Or do you have that?
I, yeah, but I think that they hired somebody this year, so I don't believe I will be this year.
Once you get that rapport with each other and start working together, you naturally get a code all-in, so everything you do, if you can help each other and make it work. Instead of going out there and trying to find another school that's thinking, got this teacher or that teacher, and see if it works in their schedule. I mean, you could lead the speech and draw and all that stuff along with it. Man, music cheerleading.
I think sometimes, too, there's been the the concern of, you know, that if we consolidate, my kid won't get to play because there'll be other better kids. And I like the idea of what you said with football, that you would have those smaller kids, the freshman kids, the, you know, JV kids and all that. But, you know, I also think it it spurs a good competitive spirit, you know, when there's more kids, and they work harder, and they just get better as a team. Instead of, you just get to play because you're here, you know? And why not work harder, you know? And it's the same for academics and for, if you're in a band and you're trying out for the chair, or whatever it is. I just think, you know, competition can be good, and it doesn't always have to be a break, it's a trophy, too, you know, participation. Although we want everybody to participate. That's, that is the benefit of being in a small town, and that's why we moved back here from Omaha. You know, we want to be in a small town, and not that my kids can do everything, or my kids can do everything, but the opportunity is there that they can try more things, and they don't have to be dedicated to one thing from when they're, you know, first grade or whatever. So, I don't know, I think we'll teach them to earn it. Yeah, that's what life's about, you know? You know, you don't just walk into a job and get, you have to earn it, so I need that work. And also, another positive, you're gonna expand their world a little bit, too. You're playing with these kids from Creighton. You've expanded the friendship base. They become teammates. They start winning. They start having good things happening. The camaraderie builds up, you know? I think it's a good thing. You have to look at the positives. There's always gonna be some negatives, but I think if you focus on the positives, you can make something good happen.
What could it do to your marching band media?
That would not be a bad thing, because you have a decent-sized marching band with all the pieces.
Which is something you never thought about.
Yeah, because I have cheerleaders. I miss the cheerleaders. I'm not here, and I'm like, where are the cheerleaders?
Those are all bonuses that we aren't even trying to go for right now, but they come along with it. You know, the positives, they come along with it.
I think I've been on the fence just because it's unfamiliar to me. I mean, I moved from Houston, Texas, to a town about the size of Pierce, but we still had fifty to seventy kids, so there was always a freshman, JV and varsity team, the cheerleaders and the dance team, you know, eighty band members. So I've never been in a position where it's, oh, we may not have enough kids to play. So I think just not being familiar with having to deal with this kind of situation, that's why I guess I never put myself in that position, you know, to be there to think about, oh, well, we might have to do something now. It's just always been, you know, we've had enough kids.
I think for communication, for everybody is gonna be huge. And also, as a board and administration, if you guys can keep in mind for the sake of our community, the facilities that are kept up the most and are the biggest and the nicest in the, you know, ten years from now, that's where all the activities are gonna be held. So if we want people to keep coming to Plainview, we need to have the nicest gym, the multiple gyms, the whatever it takes, because we need people to come to our town. You know, that's, because that's, that's a worry on our community, what's gonna happen if there's no school here eventually? So to combat that, let's get the best facilities so they want to come here. So far, but we have to maintain that and keep improving. And we are, the star gym is such.
The parish?
Yeah. It's on its way. I mean, but keep that going, keep that ball rolling, because that's gonna be important to our community.
If you get outside of the North Fork area, you know, Pierce, we're as good as anybody thirty miles from North Fork right now.
So we don't want to stop there.
Or better than ninety percent of them.
I'm Dean Cho, married to Sally here. We, we're, I guess, we speak from, some from experience, because our, before we moved here four years ago, our kids went to Cedar Rapids, Nebraska, and we let it get too small there. I mean, I'll be honest, I don't, do we, do I want to co-op? No. But I know what happens when we don't do something. And we let it get too far down at that school. And we did finally co-op with the schools to the west. It was almost twenty miles away. It was a long, seemed like it's a long drive out there. But we did make it work, and we had some success. We co-op, we formed, you know, both schools dropped their mascots and their colors, and we had a new mascot and colors. And we, you know, we at least got to state in basketball this year, that year. The boys, it was almost all our boys on the basketball team, but on the boys' basketball, but on the girls', it was almost all from the other, just because of the way it balanced out. So, you know, it's something that can be worked through, I think, if we decide to do it. And like I said, I, no, I don't really want to, but it is, suddenly you find yourself that you've ren, you've, you've let it go too far. And then you're really scrambling to try to put something together. And I guess that's my comment. We've, we've seen it. And, you know, we came here, we thought this is a pretty big school. So it's been nice to only have it in one school. We really liked that. But, you know, got to look at the reality of it.
Okay, I think I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I think that, and I really appreciate you guys talking about philosophy and not talking about detail. That's very nice, because we're not gonna solve those things here. And you did a good job of not trying to talk in detail. So thank you very much. Again, encourage people to talk to us, and we'll be voting on this at the next board meeting. We're not gonna have another forum like this, but if you have, if you have a public comment, that, that I want to have, if you want to have a comment about your issue, you can.
Maybe a communication method, other than just putting in the newspaper, would be parent letters. Because some people don't get the Plainviewers, you know, if you send it out to maybe a school letter or something, something more personal to the parents, so they feel part of it. That's cool email blocks.
The calling.
Oh, yeah, like call them all, kind of.
You know, not the all-call, but actually the email version of that. You know, you, they do the all-call, but then they also send you an email. Maybe if you just send an email, that would be enough, you know? And you wouldn't have to.
Maybe the superintendent's letter. Maybe the superintendent's.
Maybe the superintendent's letter would be going out.
The cheat sheet's back there.
You must throw him out. And of course, a lot of this is also gonna determine what Creighton's discussing at their meeting tonight too. They may be saying, you know what, we don't wanna do this, and then it's, you know, you never know.
But if they're not, then you suggest that you might go back to Osmond.
We can talk, we're gonna, discussions open.
Then if the door closes there, we're gonna keep looking, you know, and then people can get behind that.
One thing with Osmond is, I was just thinking of these numbers, when they combined Plainview and Creighton, maybe in Osmond, there's about thirty kids per year, total and moment difference with Creighton versus Osmond. So you're starting out with thirty less kids to work with, that's all classes, so.
You mean more in Osmond than Creighton?
No, Osmond, Creighton would be about thirty kids per year more than us in Osmond.
Oh, gotcha.
And there, there was a comment about not being able to make the state playoffs in football, this will be the last year of that. We'll be eligible after this. The numbers, I got the numbers upstairs, it's gotta be below eighty-three.
For like two years, we won't, but after that?
No, actually, it has changed, they passed that, you can do it halfway through your cycle, so.
Well, we can't, so next year we'll be eligible?
It, we're not eligible this year, but it'll be after this, eight man, eight man.
That's very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, going on. Right, I think.
I gave rest to them at the school. Frustration.
Good subway. Okay, another subway school.
I think that's a very important, important thing that they're gonna be starting to establish, and they need to have some connection. That's something I can wrap my mind around immediately, there's a whole lot of things that I'm just, I'm gonna take some time. But I can walk around the campus and look, uh, you know, exterior, interior, and make some assessments about some things that need some attention. Mr. Saleem and I have a meeting tomorrow scheduled, I went to our whole campus, took some notes, my wife took her notes after, as we walked around, and Gale and I were walking around, he's gonna bring you up to sleep. And I'll say, hey, what's up with that? And he'll probably say, yeah, we've been talking about it, here's the plan, I might say, okay, well, that, that, that gives you, we better do something about it. Most all of our districts, but the elementary are in the, I think it would like it a little more, cause we don't host events over there so much, and we don't have too many eyes that, that see that. But, um, our kids deserve better, our teachers, our people deserve better on, on lots of things, but that's one particular item that I brought to the board's attention, that request that made you better. So, Gale will have some bits for us, you know, maybe not next month, but, but coming up, and we'll be able to decide whether, that may be pushed the next summer or later. Okay, can it, can it happen over a Christmas break?
Did you happen to find that Mr. Alt's progression of things?
Yeah, it was an excellent idea.
And Mr. Frederick also has one of those, kind of a want list for, for athletics, and so I'm sure that he would, he does that. Those are great things to have, they need to be revised every year.
Yeah, and, and that'll be, you know, we have a building grounds committee, and that'll be one of the first groups, you know, all wanna meet with, maybe by, by next month, just. And I appreciate the comments of, of, of Sally.
Yeah.
Sally Cho about, we've, we've gotta maintain the facilities, and she's right on, and we all love that, and it does take, you know, more than investment, that people realize. Rather than wait until things are just crushed and, and broken down, uh, some things are functional, but they just look crushed.
Darren, you said one thing, you were going through the girls' locker room with Gale.
Uh, that girls' restroom.
Okay.
Girls' restroom over the elementary, I went through the girls' locker.
Okay, well, I guess one thing that I would like to look at, to take a look at, just a little bit more, like, when we did the boys', you know, if there's a little tile work that needs to be done, you know, in the showers, then let's do it. I mean, because I feel like we kinda did a half job on that boy locker, in my opinion. So, if we're gonna do, you know, let's look at, let's take a look at everything, and make it right with the girls' locker.
It's too flexible.
Yeah, right, I was.
I, I, I appreciate that, Steve, and we, we think that locker was one, but, it's a locker, and they just need some water coming out of it. But, you know, I mean, if we talk about pride and everything, we would surrender, cause we put some good things, absolutely, kids spend a lot of time in those things, and they, they tend to get neglected, become kinda sneaky, but. But I, I, I appreciate your, cause I really spend a lot of time doing it right, than, than save a buck, and we think in about ten more years.
Well, and nothing's changed in that shower since you've been here, probably.
Yeah, well, the, the new locker's so nice, I would, I would've loved to have been here when we got out the, there's one I might, like, they have in my garage. I had so much. Maybe I did, but it looks pretty similar, smells similar.
So, we're all interested in, in working on that, so get some good on that. Okay, you have a question on that? Discuss, approve, I'm on number five, discuss, approve provisions to the district safety plan, Mr. Frederick.
Pretty simple changes this year. I'll just go real quickly through what it said to you. The first one was just the update on the school safety drills, and why you bring them all up, maybe, but. Drills and meetings. Uh, biggest things were adding Dr. Arnold, his information to a lot of these. Uh, we did replace Vicki on the safety committee with Jason Ashburn, since Vicki's going off. Dr. Arnold, again, information on the contact information. On the emergency contact information, along with the medical utility and all that, we did add Dr. Arnold's information. Uh, updated it, included Jim Buckley. And then I did add Mary Piddit, we did have a couple incidences this last year where we needed to compact the cup because the refrigeration unit caused some issues. So I thought this was an easy way to try to get a hold of her. Medical emergency with Mr. Anderson leaving, um, I added Mr. Ginata to that response team. More for location, his coaching stuff, he's got a lot of knowledge in that. Evacuation procedures, some of this, look, is there, have been some changes with ministers in town, so I'm trying to still get all that information straightened out. Methodist church pastor Cola, uh, has taken over there, I do have a parsonage number now. Um, the congregational church does not have, I shouldn't say they don't have a minister, they'll have a onsite minister, I guess, am I saying that right, Jason?
I think so.
Or whatever. So I did put down Karen Foster, cause I know she's got connections with these people who have keys. What's that?
It's unlocked all the time.
Oh, it has, has been.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that all, but I'd rather check with somebody before we just, we have to send people over. Changed Pastor Legban to the Zion Lutheran Church. Took off the Legion Club, since they are privately owned venture now. But I did add the Plainview Public Library, and that has done this information, I just talked with her the other day, cause they do have that nice room if we didn't evacuate people too. And then on the crisis team, upgraded Dr. Arnold's information, and I'm still trying to get ahold of, um, Vicki helped me, is it Pastor Rungy or?
Yes.
Rungy, is that the way you print it up?
Yep.
I'm guessing they probably haven't done a meeting to update their information because of all the changes with ministers in town. So as soon as I get an association president, then I'll include that information also. Other than that, um, a couple of other things were, right now, in the elementary, we do a code yellow, since we have the lightning strike of the fire system. It's been here before, or, or whatever, we, when we got the new system, it does not have capabilities of sounding off or tornadoes. So we do a code yellow verbally over the intercom system, it's worked out for the drills and Dr. Arnold, I'll talk about. There are some issues that have arisen, trying to upgrade all that stuff, because we wanna upgrade everything.
That's okay, that's okay.
Ah, yeah. So that is, we do do a code yellow, and then, going off the, the safety visit last year, I'm going through and redoing all the tornado and fire evacuation routes, so that each individual room is only marked on each chart. It's a little bit more time-consuming, but less confusing, beyond your thoughts, so. Other than that, nothing too major this year, so.
You do an excellent job.
Very good, very good.
I was gonna say that same thing, having been a, a former safety committee chairman who did a horrible job, uh, just because it, it just, you know, it's kinda thankless, and you gotta, you gotta have these meetings, you got two different safety committees required by the state that's paying the butt. So, when I knew I didn't have to do it, I was pretty happy, I didn't care who did it, okay, but I found out early on, very thorough, very professional with this, and it's, and it's obviously very necessary. And so I really appreciate your leadership on it.
I will make a motion to approve the proposed provisions to the district safety plan as presented.
Who would have seconded it? Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Self, yes? Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Carrie?
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is procedural, designate Dr. Darren Arnold as the state incredible program director, it's a manual format, we allow me to act on behalf of the district in relation to such programs, it's special education type. Et cetera. I don't think we need, we'll just talk about that, uh, but where have we done this, we've done it before, every year, there was something, make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, designate Darren, Darren, Mr. Dr. Arnold.
Get all the written.
Did you get all out, you'll be repeated?
Who seconded that?
Nobody yet.
Oh.
Nobody knows what I said.
I didn't know if he was done. I'll second it.
Carrie, myself, yes? Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. I will let you talk on this.
If you, uh, I don't know if you folks need to bring in a speed on your discussions, but help in the past, on membership in North South, or help with the trivia card with North South. You know, apparently, you know, past super dens, they, they can spend worth the expense, and I think it's not entirely up to you. Uh, it's an organization I've been, you know, a part of for, for years, I think, strong advocate for Nebraska's rural schools and the issues that face Nebraska's rural schools. It's just a, uh, another strong network that is growing, as Nebraska schools, the number of Nebraska schools, where, you know, our situation with, you know, numbers that are decreasing. And there's a, you know, a variety of, not a, you know, support, but, uh, opportunities that, that they provide, but it, it comes at some expense, I think I listed there, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, for membership of that, I can try to use some information to look at, so, um, you know, I, I can try to answer any questions you might have, uh, for people on me, or if you wanna study it some more, uh, and maybe act on it next month, uh, if you find it. Uh, I would just, I would encourage you to, uh, to consider our, our membership of that, or decision.
Can you tell us a couple of things lately that they've worked on, or tried to get passed, or get stopped?
Well, they're, they're, they're strong, very strong lobbyists, and, and the Unicamp for Nebraska's rural schools, uh, we're, we, we have been, uh, slowly, the, you know, OPS is, is the tail wag of the rest of the state dog when it comes to education, sort of like the funding formula. Which doesn't affect us, you know, TOS formula doesn't affect us, but still, uh, you know, the Unicamp needs to find other funding mechanisms for rural schools. So they're a strong advocate for that, and they, they, uh, bring schools up to speak on the legislation that's being, you know, uh, introduced and, and ways that they can be, they act on that. They, you know, connect schools, uh, and, and administrations from those schools and better in life situations, uh, you know, consult them on, on issues, uh, for free, rather than paying three hundred dollars an hour. We call it legal representation, so it could pay for itself just in consultation. Uh, they, they provide a, a good, uh, uh, mechanism to hire super dens, which we all need. But, in a relatively new organization, uh, they're less than ten years old, I believe, I believe, uh, but becoming increasingly more popular in, in the state of Nebraska, so that small schools can make sure, you know, that they still, you know, are a strong voice, a strong advocate for, you know, education, we can look at it statewide, and the requirements of Department of Education and Unicamp, uh, you know, expect you follow.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, go ahead, join the North South, we have the two thousand sixteen school year.
Second? Jason? Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Self?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Carrie? Okay, we have two built to replace the little lockers in the girls' locker.
Hey, uh, and those bids were, were collected by, by Mr. Alt, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time you've seen a bid? Yes, yes. Okay, and, uh, you know, you have, the, the, the smallest bid is the same company that took care of the boys' locker room. And I, we put that figure on there, I'm June provided that, uh, the boys was over twenty thousand, uh, I don't know if there were more lockers.
These are different, I, the one I said, these are smaller lockers, that's kinda what I.
Oh, they're still stacked? Are there like two, or are they all?
I think they're stacked, that's the way I would look at this design.
It's bigger, yeah, it's, okay, it's bigger than what we have before.
Well, I sure hope so, I sure hope so.
I would guess these are more like what the boys used to be, okay, possibly?
That's what they were supposed to be, it was kinda like what the boys used to have, a little bigger and more, yeah.
Is this a stereo view, or?
Not now, yeah. They might do a lot of work on this.
Their graphics are, graphics department, we're looking for your desire, but, uh, but if they're, I would assume that eighteen by fifteen by seventy-two is eighteen wide, fifteen deep, seventy-two high.
That's, this is the top view.
Yeah, there you go.
Now, so they're not stacked.
No, there's one beside each other, one, one front, or back to back.
So, I don't know, kind of pedestal they're on, but if they're.
They probably made the pedestal, we probably have to do, I think I talked with Gale one day, and we have to do some cement work, aggregate it at the boys' warm, I believe.
Right, warm it up.
If that's what he talked to you about that day, yeah.
That way you keep the water out.
Yeah.
Cause that's a, a, a six-foot tall locker by a foot and a half.
Deep.
Wide, by fifteen inches deep.
Yeah, that's a pretty good size, but you can put a towel in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hang stuff. Well, should be good.
You know, girls, they like those, all the rest is very thick floor.
Yeah, yeah.
Darn it.
Yeah, so, thirteen seven for the, the one, the folks that are familiar with us versus, you know, I, I should have added that up, Ray, I'm sorry. But you can do a little bit of pan, it'd be, uh, twenty-three, so, the university pub quote. Or something somewhat similar to that, I suppose. So the discussion would be, you know, which, which, well, if you wanna accept a bid, uh, which bid to accept, and then when to work.
I'd like the work to be done, where it doesn't interfere with any activities going on either. With Christmas break, or, or next summer.
We were talking, I don't think it's gonna take a lot of time to put them in. Did they put them in, we put them in?
Corey, can you talk, can you talk to the amount of time they might have to expect, and if we did it during the school year, at any time, what we'd have to do?
Well, we did last year with the boys, because what this would do, when Gale and I met, is we would take one bank, there's a real small bank, kinda like the boys' locker room, you stand in a real small bank, we completely take that out, which are required, not the cement that's already there, out. And then, can't remember, it's extending one of the center sections, and shortening the other up, I think, and then widening it, so you have to do some of the cement work. Last year, we did that cement work all before school started. Last year, we did that cement work all before school started. Therefore, between football and basketball and wrestling or following winter sports, we moved all PE kids to the old locker room for a week or two, so Gale could have time to put the lockers in. Now, I don't know, I don't know if you can get somebody here to do cement work that quick now.
I was thinking that, I mean, if you could get this network done by the summer, that'd be great. I don't know if you can get that done, but I was thinking, when you're talking about girls athletic, athletes, you're going from volleyball, that's done until basketball starts. This is sometime in there.
Yeah, you have a break in there, so.
And so, and even if, and you don't have any other, and nobody else uses that old girl, like girls locker room, they can be in there for quite a while.
And that's what we did with the boys, we moved that down.
You could have up to a month if you wanted it in there to get that down.
You say old girls, not on the stage?
On the stage. I mean, those, those still work, but not great.
I mean, it makes no difference to me, it's just, if you do it over Christmas break, you're gonna be fighting basketball and.
Well, what do you think, see how fast we can get them, the quicker we get them in, the better.
No, mine, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's true, call them right, they could say six weeks back.
Yeah. And when the lockers could be done too, it says twelve weeks after.
We did the, we did the one, same deal.
Kevin Alvin, you know.
Okay, the same one that did all, we're gonna contact him, maybe see what.
Yeah, Gale took care of all that last year, so.
I don't think it's gonna be a real big deal.
How's his time?
He has time, it's pretty fast, it should make that yours. But on the other hand, he might want to put it off and do it between seasons, because then he doesn't, he may have a lot of other stuff working.
Yeah, do this anytime here.
Cause he can do this at, yeah, anytime, it's gonna take very long.
Just have to contact him, see his schedule as well, go from there.
Are you guys satisfied with this thirteen thousand second?
Yeah, yeah.
We know it's the same people, so.
No, we get what we got, yeah. Can we go ahead and approve the bid, put the order in, have them hold them, or we have a place we can store them if they come before we're ready for them? I mean, is that a question you could ask?
Yeah, that's a good question.
How can we store them?
Not your garage.
Sure, my charge rent.
As time goes on, there'll be more and more. You got the order in?
And we could order it for a certain time too, so we don't need them till this date.
You can put them in a hallway if you have.
I'll call them tomorrow and, and see if they have a, when their ship, estimated ship time would be.
It says twelve weeks at least, so.
It says twelve, that doesn't mean they couldn't ship them in three, but I'm sure they're giving themselves most of their time.
The boys, it was twelve weeks exactly, I mean.
Before we got.
Yeah.
We probably have to manufacture.
They aren't gonna want to sit on.
Well, let's get going on, think, if nothing else, they can stack in a hallway between lockers down there.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of new lockers for the girls locker room with the storage and design group bid of fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Mike Scott, seconded.
And contact Mr. Alvin for the, that work to be done.
That's a great job.
Somebody in, yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Self, yes?
Mike? Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes. He's out front over there.
I don't know.
Who was it?
It's Kevin, Kevin. Wife's name is Michelle.
You can probably, you can probably tell Gale.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to, you know, and to work for it, you'll look up to me.
Still, no, we'll talk. Mr. Frederick, you have a report?
I don't have a report, but I would like to thank the board right now for all you have done for the two gyms. Um, if you walked into Tartan Gym, since they put the new lights in, but.
Yeah, sure.
Takes a, no.
You can see the lights when you walk down the hallways, like, whoa.
They said they were awesome.
It is.
And the pirate gym, they're brilliant. Coming tomorrow, I believe, to hang the mats on the ends of the gym, on the Tartan Gym, cause Gale was trying to get some heat done today. Yeah, new, or the floor, the fire looks fantastic, so.
I can't imagine the pirate gym has looked any better since nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, you can peek in, you'll have to hold your, you'll get, you'll catch buzz. We're, we're, yeah, so we've done it five or six times.
Can we get all the way? I'm gonna have to meeting in there.
Our, our gym facilities, which are kind of the, the mark here is when we're hosting, so when we have guests come, you know, our, our second, and, and we'll, we'll visit about wooden bleachers at the Tartan later. But the Tartan Gym is, has probably never looked better either, especially when the red mats get on here, you know, next couple of days. So it's, yeah, thanks for the investment.
Is Jake gonna fill that back in himself or am I?
Gale's doing it.
Gale's doing it?
There's one of them done, so if you stop in there, you can see what they'll all, what they'll look like, you know, when they're all, uh, listed, the, 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 the lights.
Okay, principals report. Regal information. Steway's bachelor results were released on July thirteenth, EAC score test will be coming around. More for review of scores only, they are quarantined until later in the fall. ACT summer results were released, we had nine sophomores take the test about four juniors. Students were most rated last year, our students will be, will score above the state average at this point. And just using those particular students, had more students take the test, the average could change, she said they did awesome. She told me that. Summer registration for class will take place the first week in August, this will give students and parents a chance to check over registration requirements and change classes. Question on that. Okay, presidents report, I have a, um, letter from Alt. Order of education members, thank you for the beautiful glass apple as presented to me for my years of service in Plainview Public Schools. And once again, thank you for the opportunity to serve for the Plainview District as superintendent and to be part of the education of its students. I have many fond memories of my service here that remain with me throughout my retirement.
Is it?
Is it their alarm?
It's about fifteen.
Red a card. So we got him an apple.
It said, and Greg on it said, you made a difference. And then it had his name and subjections of those to Plainview Public Schools.
I encourage everybody to talk to people about this co-op thing that we have to vote on next week. I would like to talk to Mrs. Peterson up there and see what they talked about and if you can reiterate the things that we, like, we want to happen. If she, if she indicates that we're, that that's not gonna happen, then we just supposed to start talking to other people. I mean, if they're talking about a short term thing and they're not talking about, you know, a high school thing, then there's no reason to vote.
Whatever term you use.
Right.
But.
A co-op, a true co-op.
Yes, the true co-op, there you go.
True co-op.
Kind of all sports. Uh, we would like to do all activity, we would settle for all sports.
Stephanie and I have a, have a good relationship.
Yeah.
I, I expect to be able to speak frankly with her and honestly and confidentially.
I think she's a good person.
To be honest, you know, so, yeah, it's too big of a decision to not be, you know, completely forthcoming, but, yeah, because there's, there's information that was said, that's probably, that's gonna be public knowledge. But there's also intuition and tone and those things that I'm gonna need to know from her, that I can't pick out in minutes.
That's what I would have known, I'd like to be there when they talk to find out who is saying what and what their feelings were, because even if they vote yes, doesn't mean that they're really all that I've got pulled for.
We visited earlier this weekend, we, we have a, we have a phone date tomorrow.
Okay.
And do we, was that vote for next year's junior high with the following year doing a high school?
That's what, that's what we said.
So it's one vote.
There could be, that, we need to make sure that.
We said that this vote is for the junior high and with the condition that the next year we're gonna vote on doing it, so it's a whole.
Two votes.
Yeah, that's two votes. There's another vote in Congress.
They're gonna tell us that they want to do that.
Clarify too.
And that the second one, I mean, the whole thing, you know.
But it is still kind of a one-year trial, it could, could dissolve after one year with the two votes.
You know, if we get bad vibes.
But, yeah, cause I hate to, I would hate to get in a deal where the first vote is, we're gonna do it junior high for next year. Then the following year, they say, no, we don't wanna do it in high school. Well, now we've co-opted junior high and that does us absolutely no better good for high school sports.
Right, and it, and now we got a bunch of uniforms, if we're not gonna do it in high school, we're gonna keep doing it in junior high?
So that's where we, I think both boards need to be clear that, you know what I'm saying, I think they say, well, yeah, we'll help you out in junior high, we'd be willing to co-opt in junior high. And then when it comes to that following year, no way, no way, we're state champs in football this year, we're not co-opting. I guess we'll go back to our small teams.
We have, we have conditions on what we want. Okay, next thing, um. We're gonna have to be putting together a budget here and we're gonna have to have a meeting for that. And last year, I know I was on it, were you on that? And were you on that?
I was, because I'm, I'm, this year, I should do it.
Oh, you're not on it now. Who's on it now?
You are, right?
I think we need to have a leak station, you and I are gonna be going on. We're gonna have input when it comes up here to vote anyway, but I think we need to have plenty of young guys as we can handle, so they let you get an education.
Yeah, I don't wanna go back on, I've been on before, but I just went off so on these three young guys, we go on, so they kind of learn them. Cause we didn't know that if they were all three going on, then they'd none of them would have had experience.
One of us needs to go off, I can go off, you want to stay, you wanna stay on it?
I'll stay on it.
You stay on it and I'll go off, and then another one, you got, you got guys. Because we need to have.
One of us already on.
I'm not sure, cause he's on it, I think.
I'm a jeans guy, kind of.
I'm, I'm having much luck.
Say anything, like, do you, that's good.
Yeah, that's.
Lists on, you know, if you identify or set those in January, maybe.
Yeah, when we have a election.
I, it, yeah, it's probably.
I'm just thinking more we go off, the better.
I thought it would be in January, but I can't find.
I, I thought it was Peterson Green move.
Oh, okay, there we go. What month was it?
Uh, that's a, a January meeting.
Well, Steve and Mickey are still on, you want one of them on instead of me? Yeah, that's fine.
I'm just thinking I would go off if one of those two were going on, so we still have a.
Yeah, that's fine, then I just won't go on. Way too, uh. So we're supposed to go in?
Do we need to, uh, do we need to have four report action changes?
Do we?
I think, I think Bob just appoints, do you not? What's it say there?
It just says board committee assignments.
Yeah, see, I think he just appoints and he did it by volunteer, yes.
So I'm gonna take myself off and I'm gonna put Mike Scott on.
Yeah, I'll own with Steve.
With Steve. And if you have any questions or anything, I'll be happy to, but I can't be there. I can't have four people there. Or somebody's not there.
Maybe they're.
I can't have four, so I have a special one. Okay, I'm done, Mr. Alt.
Okay, um, yeah, and I don't have a whole lot, I don't know if you guys want something written for me every month, you know, Patty, you know, had something written out, I don't know if you want a written report or a oral report, what's been done in the past. You know, as far as, you know, day one was, we gotta get a board packet out. Uh, so, I mean, I'm a genius, you know, phenomenal at, at making sure that we just replicate what you're familiar with, and I think we probably did it, you know, adequately or appropriately. Now would be a good time if you, if there's, okay, we, we maybe like to reorganize something with the, the, the procedure, the portal, the templates or any, any of that kind of business. But as far as, uh, you know, a report for me every month, you know, I don't know what your expectations are, you let me know and, you know, and I'll do it. What I'm up to, and what's, uh, you know, heads up on anything, uh, updates on anything, you know, if there's any routine items, I can, I can do what I've done in the past.
One thing I thought maybe we got tonight is that they really want some communication from us. So I think we need to work on that. And, uh, maybe the email thing that goes out, maybe send a letter home with the kids type of thing. Maybe we need to do more of that, so that they know what we're doing.
Certainly the best way to reach folks is our all-call system, and when we have a school emergency or a school closing, that's our best opportunity to reach ninety-nine percent of our people. And if we can't reach yet, I don't know what you want us to do. Okay, but it, that's a, that's an easy system to use, I haven't used it actually, I'm a genius teacher.
Not me.
Somebody will teach me. I'm a genius, find somebody who can teach me. Tom, my sponsor, Jen?
Tom, yeah.
Cory.
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 Somebody people this meeting, if we, for that, we can say, we have a meeting talking about co-op and moving your all those.
They'll, they'll get a, they'll get an all-call email from me for next month, a day prior, and maybe we'll do that, you know. Some mind叨thing.
Only goes to parents of kids, right? It doesn't go to just.
That's true, that's true.
District.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, you know, I get it, not everybody reads the paper, not everybody gets the paper, I mean, you do have a responsibility to inform yourself to some.
Right, but could you put it on the, just the website?
Yeah.
The school website too, the same parent, the same letter.
Yeah, I think the minutes go up.
The agenda is always on the website as well as the minutes. I think the all-call thing to the kid, to the parents is great, I think it's the older generation will read the Plainview news more so than the, than the younger ones. So then we would reach both of the boards.
And again, we could put something out, give some suggestions on how you'd like to be informed of. Now, Mr. Alt did for a while write an article in the paper, you know, like once a month or something like that.
I intend to do that.
And if you want to do that, that's all right, but I don't think that's an obligation that you do it every month, whatever.
I'm, I'm, I'm used to doing that, I believe in it, I think it's important.
Okay.
Uh, so I do intend to do that, Dr. Brooke about it already, he's happy to give the whole space I want.
Okay.
You know, otherwise, you know, this week, uh, you know, haven't thought, you bring, you brought up budget, haven't even thought about it yet.
I know.
Because, uh, I mean, that's, that's not the thing that, that I think of first as a leader of a school, so, you know, the, the first thing I wanna do is, is meet our people. And I've been really busy with, uh, individual teacher meetings, uh, and, uh, a couple of the nice folks have stopped in to introduce themselves, Mike and Susan. You know, certainly provide some leadership for the school, so I was happy to, to, to meet them, so, um, you know, if, if I'm working on something and somebody stops, I drop everything, they're, they're gonna get my attention right now. That might not always be that way, I'm a genius, and I are starting to get a signal. Yeah, and she, she gave me a few heads up on some people, uh, names to be with now, you know.
That's why you hid it at your desk when I came in.
So if I'm ever visiting with you and she stops and gives me a note, uh, there's really nothing on it. So, um, you know, that, that's monopolizing my time, I mean, obviously getting unpacked and stuff, and, and then just what I feel I can absolutely contribute immediately, which is, uh, just get a, a, a good assessment of our campus and our facilities. And I tell you, you know, when I did this last year in Palm Springs City, I was like, I wanted to get some work to do. And, uh, and we did some things that we could do immediately, and then we, we put together a good long-term strategic plan of facilities and building grounds. We don't have a whole lot of work to do, but we have, you know, we have some things, and I'll be, I'll, I'll enjoy being a part of that discussion in the coming months about the, you know, the plan to make sure we maintain, you know, the, you know, our, our awesome facilities, which for forty years old are spectacular. My wife, uh, I mean, it's just, she's, you know, shocked that this is a forty-year-old building. Not shocked that that's a ninety-eight-year-old building. But, uh, I mean, it's just, it, it just looks and still smells the same, that's what I love, I mean, the place just still smells just like I remember it.
Nostalgic smell.
Yeah, the smell and nostalgia, the smell and stuff. So, uh, I called Steph Peterson and Dave Hamm on my first day on the job, uh, just to connect, and they knew I was coming, I emailed them weeks and weeks and weeks ago. Uh, and they knew I was coming, so, but I just think, you know, and I'll get around to contacting, and, and I've talked to Delmo Weekly, I guess you ate, I mean, just the folks I know that for, that support our school, provide services to our school, that I'm gonna be working with, those relationships are vital. To, you know, I mean, obviously, we want absolutely what's best for Plainview Public Schools, and I know I have good relationships with our, with our friends up and down the highway and so on, they're very important, so. Uh, to, you know, I, I mean, obviously, we don't want absolutely what's best for Plainview Public Schools, and I know I have good relationships with our, with our friends up and down the highway and so on, very important, so.
We called the Roofing Company, cause they're always here.
Is there, is there, is there a contractor in the audience here? Uh, and, you know, I will wanna visit about, uh, Craig Pease is a budget consultant that I've used, uh, he's Professor Wade State Retired Superintendent. Uh, and I've been in contact with him about providing, possibly providing some consultation for an, an overall assessment of, I have all our documents, and I've looked at it, I, I, I can't, I, you know, that's, that's not the most, I can't digest that very well naturally, as I'm not a superintendent. Uh, and so I'm gonna appreciate a professional set of eyes to, to help me really get a good assessment of, uh, our finances, uh, and then possibly just help some, with some consultation in this first, you know, budget, uh, you know, cycle for us. And so I'll visit with, you know, the committee and the full board, a little more about, uh, you know, my desires for that, so, uh, I, just, I don't know, just an awesome, it's just been fun so far, to be honest with you, it's just been fun, love visiting with our staff.
Can I tell you what he did? He sent personally written notes to every teaching staff member, asking them to set an appointment to come in, and they are just, this is wonderful.
Scared.
Yeah.
They're not scared, they just think it's great.
The resignations are gonna be terrible.
I'm not, uh, yeah, and, and I'm not hitting them too hard with the, the, the expectations, which are gonna be, you know, astronomical, but I, I, I don't get, I don't get a sense from anybody that they are ready to, it sounds like, to. Kick it up a notch, or, you know, whatever, so they're, I, I, we just, summertime is not, you know, the most fun time to be a, an administrator, because the halls are, you know, they look, they look gorgeous, I mean, you, you know, they're empty, and that's not what a school should be, so. Been in the weight room several times already, just to, you know, hear and see and smell kids. I just, I, I can't wait for the, for August, mid-August to begin here, so, there's a whole heck of a lot of work.
I have one request, I guess, when the practice comes around, I live the foodies, I don't get them till Saturday.
You don't, you all get them Saturday?
I don't get them until Monday.
We can scan the whole thing today.
You think you're Friday?
Yeah.
My Saturday.
Are you on a route?
No, that's, both of them.
Post office box, are you on a route?
This week, I guess, which I got on Saturday, but usually I get on Friday.
Just practices, it's, 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 you know, hopefully it should be a twelve to twenty-five page, okay, attachment.
Is it a problem to reel them there to?
That's a problem, because we don't have.
Do you want real accurate budget numbers?
We want, we want, yeah, we wanna pay as many bills as possible, and that will cut off. It might be late.
Can you hand the list to them, truly, you can come around the school, that might.
Just give it to your kid, you know, I'm sure they feel that very threat, you know, problem.
Well, that's fine. There's just a lot of stuff sometimes, too. I mean, this works, it's just.
That's late.
Once in a while, it's, if I'm gone, because we were gone until late Sunday night, and it's, it's.
I can't see them going out sooner than that Thursday for the board, I just don't think that's, uh.
You can fix the mail system.
I would love to.
No, that's fine, I'll make it work.
Oh, yeah, they go right down there, Gail may also, like, quarter just.
So do they, when, you put them on Thursday, so they don't go down, they go right to us?
I do, I believe that they are good enough down there, at least if rain is working.
Uh, we have them on Friday.
Yeah, somebody, somebody did get it on Friday, somebody did write it, yeah, that's probably that's.
Otherwise, they're gonna go to home, maybe yours, because you're on the.
Maybe I should stop in and ask her.
See what she says.
We get IPO boxes.
We have to wait a couple times, she can never keep it in the office.
I gotta come town and get a mailbox, I might come up here and pick it up.
Well, you know.
Yeah.
Does Emma drive, ride the bus every day?
No.
No, we're in town enough, we just gotta get my habit going up, so. But then you gotta know whether to put it.
You let me know if I should hold it, yeah.
Just keep putting the mail sign here.
Okay, okay.
That way I have an excuse, and I just go.
That's, that's really all, unless you have any questions for me?
I don't know, I just heard from my son that he thinks you're gonna be great, so. I think you're attitude, you're aren't being here, but I think it's just really good, so.
I know it's not on the agenda or anything, but last month, we had a discussion, I think we left without a girls' basketball coach.
We're, we're, okay, cause there was a couple folks, I, uh, we go with Patty, obviously, too. We're at what?
I also have a question, the board usually hosts a picnic for staff members in August.
Oh, ask what do you, when to ask.
When, where?
You've been having a serendipity.
The only concern there is every time I, I do that, every year I call them first, and it's like something else going on, and I'm.
That's usually Friday night.
What about the new restaurant?
I would, I would say, I would like to have the club first.
And who would you like to cater to, and said, I'll need a caterer? Do you have a?
This young guy, he's a new guy, he posted, he had done this, he's about like Mary's hanging out.
And when would you like to have this, on that Friday of?
The Friday of the first week, if we agree.
Yes, because the teachers have to be in here on the twelfth, but I think the following Friday might be.
Cussing.
That's what we had on.
Yes, and I will make sure that they're.
Ten year, almost kind of a war.
And that's usually, you take that on the, on the course side? You're talking to off course side, or?
Right.
Okay.
I'll see what I can do.
If you can't get that, maybe we can have the whole thing, or. If you can't.
Yeah, I don't know what they have down there actually for separate.
I don't know if they use the backfire.
They do use the backfire.
Probably with the chamber meeting was at the other day.
It was, it was up front.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. Just about. Gatherers, very gatherers.
Anything else?